Spotlighting Hawaii's leaders.
We want to bring in Governor David E.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Lieutenant Governor, good morning. Thanks so much for joining us. Mayor Derek Kawakami.
Thank you so much, Senator, for being here. Spotlighting the issues. Where is the virus right now in our community?
How much is this overall going to cost the state?
How are you responding to the community's concerns? Talk about the level of citations that you guys are writing.
Spotlight Hawaii with Yanji Denise and Ryan Kalei Suji on the digital platforms of the Honolulu Star Advertiser.
This episode of Spotlight Hawaii is brought to you by Longstrugs.
Aloha and happy Monday. Thanks so much for joining us here on holiday for some of you. I'm Ryan Kalei Suji, joined by Yanji Denise, and this is Spotlight Hawaii on the digital platforms of the Honolulu Star Advertiser. This morning, we focused back in on the race, all the races that are happening in the city council, and targeting one specific district in the Hawaii Kai neighborhood.
That's right. We are talking to the candidates for Honolulu City Council District Four. That does include Hawaii Kai all the way through to parts of Diamond Head and Waikiki. Joining us now is the current seat holder, Tommy Waters, along with the challenger, Kaleo Nakoa. Thank you both for being here.
Aloha and thank you.
Thank you guys.
Good to see you both, and thank you for joining us indeed, as Ryan noted on what some have as a holiday. We know the kids are off, but the work continues. I want to start with you, Kaleo. Why did you decide to jump into this race?
You know, for me, I was on the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board for a year, and we've been dealing with a lot of issues on the board, not on the board, but in Hawaii Kai. And one of the issues was the Luana Kai Project. And we know where Tommy stands on it. One of the things is, when he pulled papers for Congress and City Council, the community was coming up to us, asking us, what was Tommy's, what direction was he going? And so I called his office twice, didn't get an answer, and I talked to his secretary and I asked her. And she said, you know, she doesn't have the answer. I have to ask Tommy. And I said, well, that's why I'm calling, because when the community, you know, asks me, asks me for answers, and I say, I don't know, you know, that's not the kind of answer I want to give. I want to be able to provide, you know, some safety, security, and some answers to the community. And I think, I think we need to change, you know. Pretty much, you know, we need more boots on the ground and take care of our people first.
And Chair Waters, we did note that, you know, or as Kaleo noted there, there were some speculation that you could perhaps be considering a run for that CD2 race. Ultimately, why did you decide to stick with this particular seat?
Ultimately, I made a commitment to the constituents of District Four, and I wanted to fulfill that commitment. And that's why I decided to stay home and run for reelection.
Let's stick with you, Chair Waters. You know, there is a lot that's happening right now in the city council, and so there's a lot of issues that we want to talk about. Let's, let's address some of the things that are happening specifically in your district and your community. One of the things, of course, is just the availability of housing and housing options for those residents. Not only in your district, this is an island-wide, statewide issue. What are some of your thoughts about ways in which to create more affordable options and ways that you can help to reduce the cost of living for so many island residents who struggle to find themselves able to purchase a home?
Oh, thank you so much. You know, I talk about this a lot. I'm the fifth of six kids. We were all born and raised right here on Oahu. I, along with my brother Craig and sister Kathy, graduated from the Kamehameha Schools. Two of my sisters went to Castle High School in Kaneohe, and my sister Miley graduated from Kaiser in Hawaii Kai. But I'm the only one who still lives here. All my siblings live on the mainland because they cannot afford to live here in Hawaii. You know, I'm scared to death to think of the possibility that my two kids, Kai and Emma, won't be able to afford to live in Hawaii. And I'm an attorney, been practicing for 27 years. I'm able to make a decent living, but yet I still live paycheck to paycheck. You know, I feel the pain, the struggle is real. One of the things that the city is doing, we put in $8 million a year into the Affordable Housing Rental Fund, and that's simply not enough. The mayor is doing a good job of getting that money out from the revolving fund, but, you know, we can do much more. I advocate for using city-owned property, giving it over to a developer with a 65-year lease, similar to what we did in Chinatown with Haleviolu, where we're building homes for people making 65 or 60% AMI and below. And, and this is really workforce housing. The biggest impediment, I believe, to affordable housing is land. The cost of land here in Hawaii on Oahu is expensive. So, to the extent that the city can utilize city-owned land, we should. And, and we don't want to build affordable housing because our Department of Land Management is running at a 50% vacancy. They simply can't do it. We have to rely on the public sector to do that. You know, one of the things I did on 1615 A' Wai was a dilapidated piece of property with drugs, prostitution, and other crimes going on. Well, we condemn that piece of property. We had to pay fair market value for it, but I want to use that property to build affordable housing. This idea, by the way, came from the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. And it's, it's not something that we need to reinvent the wheel on. We can do this right now and today. And I hope, if I'm reelected, to continue to do that.
Kaleo, I want to get your thoughts on affordable housing, just what you're seeing in the neighborhood, and, and your suggestion and ideas that you feel that you can bring to the table if elected into this office.
You know, we had a forum on Saturday with the Honolulu Board of Realtors, and, you know, Tommy brought up a good point or idea of what they did, you know, and they bought a condemned building. And they can go ahead and build up and make, you know, affordable homes without buying out all the land. One of my concerns is when you buy out the land and you sell it to a developer, right? In the contract, you might say, you know, you're gonna charge this much for affordable homes, but your mortgage might be, you know, affordable. But every time you sell it to a developer, you know, there's HOAs. And we're dealing with that now. I'm personally dealing with that now. I lived in my townhome for two years, and the HOA already went up $100 a month. So, you know, HOA never stays the same. It never goes down. So, we need to make sure we, instead of saying the term affordable housing, I think we need to make housing more affordable for the people. If we keep buying out the land and selling it to developers, you know, that's what's pricing the people out. And, you know, I'm born and raised in Maui. And with, sorry, I'm born and raised in Maui, sorry, my friends, my coworkers. I'm born and raised in Maui, and my family, they have homes there. And, you know, they're, they're ready to sell. They're ready to pick up and leave. But, you know, I tell them, you know, like Tommy said, there's no way, once we leave, there's no way we can come back here and live and buy. As soon as you sell, you're gonna sell quick, and the money, the market would just jump up, you know. So, one of the things I've, oh, go ahead. Sorry, bro.
No, no, no. I was just gonna agree with you. Because one of the things the city needs to do a better job, we require certain developers to build affordable. But yet, at the same time, there's, I don't think we're tracking that to make sure it happens. You remember that building in Kaka'ako that was supposed to be affordable? And it wasn't because of the HOA fees? So, that's very, very troubling. Kaleo makes a very good point, and I agree with him. Once you leave, it's really, really hard to come back. So, this is something that's on the forefront of my mind and his mind, and I think all the candidates running for the city council.
I want to ask you about safety. Kaleo, let's start with you. Waikiki, that district in particular, has seen a lot of crime and a lot of concerns about the safety of visitors and residents who, who call that place home. What do you think can be done to increase safety measures? We have talked to Steve Alm and to, you know, Chief Logan about some of their efforts. Do you think enough is being done in this area to make sure that is, that that is indeed a safe neighborhood?
You know, honestly, Waikiki is bad, and actually, it's starting to go out to all the other, you know, little communities. You know, you just seen the home invasion on the 6,000 block of Kalani'ano'ole. There's, I talked to another, um, community member who's in a wheelchair, and he's afraid. He doesn't even want to go to the store. He can't even go to 7-Eleven because of how long it takes him to get in and out of his car with a wheelchair. So, he's concerned. He's afraid, and he doesn't live in Waikiki. As far as Waikiki goes, there's a lot of programs in place, right? You got the Sit and Lie Law. You got the Safe and Sound, I think they just came out with. To me, the problem is, we start all these programs. Every four years, there's a new program that comes out. Well, the old program is not. It's just a program that started, and then it's forgot about. And then four years later, election season comes around, and then we start another program. So, everyone gets excited, but it's like the homeless program, right, that cares. You call the number 211, and all you get is someone on the other side of the line telling you, hey, well, can you pick up that person and bring it to, bring them to us? You know, and that happened personally to one of my friends. She was concerned about this homeless person, and they pretty much said, oh, can you give them a ride down to the station? You know, so all these programs sound good, and it looks good in front of cameras. But if you really dig into it and you really try and use those systems, you know, they're not in place to actually provide assistance. And one of the issues is, I walked around Waikiki, you know, a bunch of times, at a different bunch of stakeholders, and even, um, you know, managers of hotels on there. And it's actually getting worse. As we speak, you go down there and you'll see someone with their, you know, private parts hanging out next to a family, you know, of four, and their two kids have to run past this guy and look at his jump while they're, you know, wanting to swim in the ocean. And I talked to the people, local people, and asked them, why do you guys not come down here? And they said, it's because the water's gross, just it, Waikiki's dirty, it's unsafe. And so that's what we need to do, and we need to make sure we support the police, you know, talking to Steve Alm. You know, that's good and all, but the justice system is failing Hawaii more than, you know, any other program out there.
Chair Waters, what are your thoughts on how we can shore up safety in that district?
So, in the past budget cycle, the city council appropriated an additional $12 million for HPD, Home Police Department, of which a large portion of that is for more patrolling police officers. I really believe a patrolling police officer is the best deterrent to crime. We also approved the 20% pay raise for police officers over the next four years, and I hope that's gonna do more to retain and keep our Honolulu police officers right here at home. But, you know, we did start though, it's, we didn't see it. We just call it another name. It's called Safe and Sound. And the biggest part of Safe and Sound is if somebody gets caught in Waikiki and they go to court, the judge has the ability to impose a geographic restriction, meaning you cannot go back into Waikiki. And if you do, you can be arrested on the spot. Now, here's the key, though. The courts have to step it up because my understanding is on petty misdemeanors and misdemeanors, which it's a lot of the crime going on, as well as really serious crime. Don't get me wrong. But there's no supervision whatsoever. People get arrested, they go to court, and they're released on credit for time served, oftentimes one or two days in jail with no supervision. That means no mental health assessment under treatment, no substance abuse assessment under treatment. And to me, that's a huge problem. All you gotta do is, Kaleo is saying, you walk down Waikiki, and you can see it for yourself. People with mental illness, defecating on the sidewalk, people stealing from ABC stores, coming right out of jail, and they go right back to ABC Store and steal again. That's gotta stop. To me, it's pretty common sense, right? You need to get that geographic restriction in place. You need to get people the help that they need, and sometimes, help means going to jail.
I want to just say on this issue of, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. You know, like another thing, you know, Tommy was saying, they gave 12 million to HPD. But another issue is, you know, put yourself in HPD shoes. You go ahead and you arrest someone for crimes or, you know, homeless person. You put them in the back of your squad car, and now you have someone defecating in the back of your squad car. You take them to jail. They get released a few hours later. But you're the one, HPD officer, he's the one, or she's the one, stuck with cleaning out the back of their car because that person that they arrested defecated in there. And so, you know, it's another thing where, will I want to arrest this person for doing something petty? Put them in the back of my car, and I have to clean out my car because they, you know, they're following the truck or in the car, and now the, the system is gonna let them out. So, you know, there, there's another issue there too when you talk to HPD.
Yeah, let's expand a little more on this homelessness issue, and Chair Waters, I'll come back to you first. You know, the city is taking on a new approach with this care program and a new mentality of trying to tackle this. Your thoughts on the way that this administration is trying to solve the homeless problem? And, and your thoughts on ways to address it specifically as it relates to what people in your community are seeing with homeless?
Well, homelessness, you know, when I was growing up, we didn't have this problem. And my kids are growing up with this being the norm. And in East Honolulu, the numbers have gotten bigger. You got homeless folks living on the slopes of Diamond Head, in vacant properties on Kahala Avenue, all the way out to Hawaii Kai, in the Kanuhalau and under the bridges. So, this is real, and we need to put all hands on deck. You know, we accepted 300 Section 8 vouchers. We gotta do our best to get it out. We're still doing the Housing First program. The core program, which is what the mayor initiated, putting a psychologist or psycholo- psychiatrist on an ambulance so they can administer antipsychotic drugs for folks who are in need, is a good idea, but we need to do more. Ultimately, I think, again, the courts need to step it up. You got the, the carrot and the stick, and, and really, the core program is the carrot. You're asking people to come in and let us help you. But these folks are suffering from mental illness. They're not gonna accept the help. You need the stick. That's where the courts come in. We need to order people into treatment and order them. There's a process that, that allows the doctors to administer antipsychotic medication. It's cumbersome, but we need to do it. We need to put the resources towards that and get it done.
Kaleo, I want to get your thoughts on, on the core program overall, and, and what your thoughts are about homelessness and how you would resolve that in your district. I believe you're in mute right now. If you can unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry. You know, like I said earlier, the programs that the city and state has in place, it, it sounds great, but it doesn't help the people. You know, the core program, we called the number after one of the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Boards, you know, the sergeant shared a number that we could use to get in contact with the, you know, ambulance or whoever, to come out and render aid to the people who want help. And so we walked along Irma's, you know, by Ellen Davis. They got that one lot by the Hawaii Kai Golf Course, and we walked that land. And Gene Moore was there, Keola and Adam From, Tommy's office was there. We had DLR officers out there. And we met this female who wanted help, and she said, you know, she was begging for help. So, we called that number, myself and another member on the board, we called that number. And when you call that number, you have to call three other numbers, and finally, once we got an answer, it's, oh, can you tell that person to walk to Sandy's Beach? Because we don't have any units to go out there, so can they just wait, go over there and wait for us? And this person, her leg was all busted up. Her leg was infected. She had a hard time walking. And, you know, we had to take off, so we don't even know, there's no follow-up to see if this person actually got the help. And another one that happened the other day, another candidate, her name is Kenzie Texera. She was driving to Raimana'la, and she's seeing this homeless person, real skinny, real fragile, frail, needed help, and she called, I believe it was 211 is the number. And they, they told her, oh, can you pick him up and take him down to the hospital, to the station, so we can look at him? You know, so, all these programs sound good and look good on paper, but actually, when you go to use it, you know, there's a lot of fine tuning that I think if we, you know, were to tweak these programs and make sure we have assets out there, I think it'd be a great thing.
I want to give you an opportunity now to ask questions of each other. Kaleo, we'll start with you. Your question for Tommy Waters.
Tommy, question, bro. Whether, you know, I already told Adam and Keola this, you know, no matter who gets in, you know, they're gonna have a job because those guys are pretty badass. I'll just say that. And if I was to get in, would you want to work together to keep pushing Hawaii forward? That way, you know, because, man, you, you have a lot of knowledge, you have a lot of pool, you know, you know the ins and outs. Me and Moore are, put me on the ground, I'll go walk the streets, and we'll talk to the people, and then we can collaborate. You know, would that be something that you look into?
Absolutely, Kaleo. You know that I have nothing but aloha for you. And should you win this, I would absolutely work side by side with you and help you in any way possible.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, and now it's time for Tommy, for you to ask a question of Kaleo.
You know, I don't have a question for Kaleo, but over the course of the campaign, I've gotten to know him, and I think he's gotten to know me. And, and I have lots of aloha for his brother. You know, he's, he cares about our community. He's passionate, and quite honestly, his brother is fearless. And, and I really appreciate that because what we're doing, not only campaigning, but willing to do this job, it's hard work, and it's the hardest job I've ever done, but I have to say, it's the most satisfying. You know, it's a big sacrifice, right? I, I see you have your child seat in the car. I know you have two beautiful young children, and I see them. You've brought them to various events, and you are truly blessed. But it is also a sacrifice, you know. I, I miss oftentimes my son's volleyball or basketball games, or their practices, or my daughter's hula recitals because I have to come to a community meeting or, or other thing. And the fact that you're willing to do that, Kaleo, sends, says volumes about the kind of person you are. And I just got the utmost respect for you, and I'm, I'm lucky to have such a worthy opponent. And I'm just stoked that you and I both care a lot about the same things. Oftentimes, we, we, like I said, we're in events. There's my son back there. But, uh, you know, I, again, we, we don't agree on everything, but I would say 90% of the things we do agree on. And, and if you were to win, brother, I would be happy to support you in any way I can.
Thank you, bro. Yeah, I, I get it. Retired military, 20 years, deployments, you know, miss a lot of birthdays, anniversaries, you know, Christmas. So, yeah, you know, we've been there, and we know what it's like, bro. Thank you, Tommy. I respect you, bro.
Well, we, we certainly have more questions for you, so we'll take care of asking the questions. So, we'll, we'll start back with you, Chair Waters. You know, there is just a lot of frustration with the Department of Planning and Permitting, the backlog that people are experiencing right now, which is ultimately leading some to more frustrations that ties into the whole affordable housing piece as well. Your thoughts on how the department is being managed currently and any other suggestions you can afford to help the backlog that we're seeing?
Well, I was really concerned when the director, Dean Uchida, resigned. You know, within the first two years of taking office, so that's a concern. You know, initially, they asked for more money to modernize, and the city council came through, and we appropriated more money. You know, one of the things I wanted to do was get rid of the vacant positions that were vacant for over 10 years. And they asked, please don't eliminate those positions, so we acquiesced, and we did not eliminate that. In fact, they asked for more positions, and we gave it to them. And, and quite honestly, I'm equally frustrated. One of the things that the, that the council really can't do, but if I were in the position of mayor, this is something that I would do, I would, one, upgrade their pay. These plan reviewers are making between $35,000 and $55,000 a year. It's not a living wage. They, they can't support their families. I would make it professionalized, just like a police officer or firefighter. You gotta take a test. You gotta know the land use ordinance like the back of your hand, and you get paid commensurate with the level of testing that you do. I would then shift the burden. When you apply for a building permit, you oftentimes are rejected because you missed A, B, or C. Well, give the permit to the applicant with a list of things that they need to get done. And then, when you go to inspect the property, you'd see and make sure that each one of those deficiencies were taken care of. In other words, backload it on the inspection side rather than upfront on the permitting side.
Kaleo, I want to get your thoughts on the status of what's happening at DPP and your thoughts on ways to reduce some of that backlog.
You know, like Tommy mentioned, you know, maybe a increase, you know, incentivize these people. You know, like, hey, you know, if we pay you more, you know, will you come out here and work the extra hours to make sure we can clear up this backlog? But also, it comes with, you know, we're not gonna just pay you the money and hope you do a great job. Something that we did in the military, no matter what rank you were, you had to go through employee evaluations. And I think, you know, once you hold people accountable, then you're gonna start seeing more results. And when you start seeing those results in a positive way, then you reward those, you know, results. And that's where, you know, like Tommy was saying, you know, give these people a pay raise, but also hold them accountable. Don't just give them money and say, you know what, do your best to take care of this backlog. You know, we need to make sure that we're spending money wisely, and we're making sure that, you know, we're using the taxpayers' money where it belongs. And for me, you know, it's not just DPP. It's Department of Enterprise Services. It's the Office of Elections, it's, you know, Department of Health with the Red Hill Water Crisis. You got Department of Enterprise Services who are letting unpermitted vendors down in Waikiki. Or if you look at it, the Cocoa Crater Stables, you know, they're just setting up our people for failure. And it's not just DPP. It's multiple departments that we need to overhaul and take a look at.
We're approaching the end of the hour. I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to get to a little bit of the personal side. I'm interested to know, what in your own life experience do you think is unique that you bring to this position? And Kaleo, we'll start with you.
You know, being retired military, did 20 years in the Coast Guard. And I know a lot of people say, oh, these new candidates, they don't know what they're getting into. They don't know, you know, what it takes. Well, being in the military, you transfer and you leave everything behind every three to four years. Just as when you get, just when you're ready to get used to the place, you're out. So, you have to start a new job from going to brand-new Coast Guard cutters, going to new, um, you know, assets. And you only have, at the most, six months to know your job. And if you don't hold, hold, um, that position within that six months, then you, you're held accountable, and you get stuff taken away, right? So, for me, you know, it's jumping into city council where I have a lot to learn, but listening to the people, being on the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board, and just hearing and talking to other city council members. You know, yeah, there is a lot to learn, but, you know, it's not impossible. A lot of people make it seem that, seem like it's impossible. If you got the will and the drive and the people supporting you, you know, anything's possible.
And Chair Waters, what, what unique in your life experience do you bring to this job?
As I mentioned, I was born and raised on this island. I grew up in very meager means. Actually, I would say, I grew up poor. I know the value of hard work. I, I paid for my own tuition at Kamehameha Schools. I put myself through college and law school. I've been practicing law for 27 years. I served on the Hawaii State House of Representatives for three terms as Higher Ed Chair, Judiciary Chair. On the council, I now serve as your chair. Drafting legislation, introducing it and getting it passed is no easy task. And then being able to usher it through, asking the right questions. And then, once you get it passed, actually getting the administration to implement it, that's a whole nother ball of wax. That's, it's really difficult to do. And I think experience matters. There, I have no doubt that Kaleo could do this job, no doubt at all. But with me, I hit the ground running. I'm not gonna stop working, right? I, in fact, after this, I'll go right back to work and probably work to 7, 8 o'clock at night tonight. That's what the job entails, and that's the kind of commitment that you have to do in order to do it right. Anybody can, can just show up and vote yes or no. But the fact of the matter is, drafting good legislation, and by the way, I've passed 57% of all the bills that I've introduced. And I've introduced 497 pieces of legislation since I've been elected in 2019. My colleagues have the confidence in me to elect me as their chair, which I'm very thankful for. But again, that's a really, really difficult job too. But I enjoy it. You know what they say, if you enjoy your work, it's not work. And that's exactly how I feel. And hopefully, my constituents give me another opportunity to serve. Thank you.
All right, well, we are out of time. We want to thank you both very much for joining us here this morning and wish you both the best of luck on the upcoming election. Thanks so much for spending your morning with us.
Aloha.
Thank you.
Malakaleo.
Yanji's actually muted right now.
And that happens from time to time. Great to hear from them. And I like this comment from Gene who says, "Love the aloha spirit expressed by each of you." You know, we really did see, Ryan, a lot of generosity in their words toward one another, both of them really highly praising the other, but also outlining differences on policy matters. And, uh, you know, you heard Chair Waters there really highlighting his experience as a lawmaker, while Mr. Nakoa is saying that his relative inexperience as a politician is not an issue because he says that he really wants to learn. And his, his military experience, he says, has given him the training to take on this kind of leadership.
Yeah, these two candidates really sharing in that aloha that we've seen on the other races as well in these. You know, we've been highlighting the different races for the city council, and there is not a lack of respect. I mean, there's just a lot of positive thoughts and words that are being expressed between candidates so far in all of these forums that we've had on the city council, and that's continuing on with this district. But as we mentioned at the top, it's a district that encompasses many different types of uh many different types of communities. You have Waikiki all the way to Hawaii Kai, each with different issues. Uh and so this is one of those races where there are a a number of issues, some overlapping. We've talked, we were able to touch briefly on uh homelessness and its impacts to both of these uh areas of the island. But uh, you know, really, it should be an interesting race to see uh how someone experiences and has the visibility and name of Chair Waters is going up against a relative newcomer in Kaleo Nakoa.
Yeah, great to hear from them. We continue this series on Friday with uh Val Okimoro and Ron Menor. Excuse me there. Uh but first, on Wednesday, we're gonna be talking to someone who's holding office and the, at the moment, of course, that is Governor David Ege. He'll be joining us. Uh, you know, he's only in office for a few more months, but still at the helm and still uh making a significant impact on the state. We definitely wanna get a follow-up on Aloha Stadium. He surprised a lot of folks with his announcement there that he doesn't think public-private partnerships are needed. Since the last time we talked to him, of course, we did have the chair of the Aloha Stadium Board, Ryan Andrews, along with uh Chris Kinimaka from DAGs, they were pushing back against that. So where does it all stand now? We'll be asking the governor about that and a host of other issues right here, ten thirty on Wednesday.
We'll see you then. Aloha.
This episode of Spotlight Hawaii is brought to you by Long Strugs.